Other work sessions were, first piece of business is the whole business. We can change order number one. We moved to this one so that we had some time to understand how the Trailblazers, whatever, crossings, et cetera, et cetera. Steve and I have talked about this for a while. If we get into the change order, I'll sit down and ask you to review what we're going to do. As part of the discussion, if you're going to have a meeting or presentation tonight by Alta, I would remind you place Derrick. He has your final contact, your files in the safe. Because if everybody decides that they're just going to go to Trailblazers or going to go, I'm going to call Alta and just put a crank on it and show you when these things are going to be done. Any questions on this at all?
Will it be able to wait until August for their point of view?
Yeah, because there's no original potential here, I'm concerned. This is money that the Alta Family Foundation, I gave us.
Yes.
And so Kerry holds that separately and it's not in the general accounts. So that has no transparency. Anything else?
I would just say, since I was kind of advocating for tabling this resolution and have subsequently had conversations, I was contacted the next day by the Trailblazers.
You actually went out on site with them?
We did, we did. We made a site visit, we visited a couple of different places. And really, what makes this something that I can get on board with is knowing that there's a process where the city has the authority of approval for any changes that might reduce the number of tunnels in the future. And one of the things I've asked, I asked them for that day, and I've subsequently asked Derrick for, since he is going to be our point of contact, is for the contractors to try to advance the assessment of each of the tunnels that are out there so that we know one time how many tunnels might be at risk, might not be viable in the grand scheme of things. So that we can do that one time and not incrementally do it as we go out to each of these. So we've got one tunnel complete, one under construction, two that we waved off already. And each time we wave off a tunnel, I think it decrements or dilutes the value of the original proposition. So I'd like for us to be able to see all those in one shot rather than incrementally over time. So that's my ask. That's what would make me feel okay getting on board with this is a response back that we're going to do that, we're going to complete the assessments, whatever needs to happen so that we know.
I think one of the unfortunate things, I mean, the foundation decided to leave this set of tunnels, sort of this set of trails before they're finished. Last time we waited until it was over. So now there's the expectation, as you mentioned, that's already been down and out. So pointing, and just understand, there may be lasting hiccups as we come with the traffic lights at 71 in Kingsland. That we're not expecting at all. Even crack and salt, thought it was clear, et cetera.
Right. Yeah, I understand that the initial assessment may be cursory at best, and that you don't do the complete assessment until you're ready to put a backhoe in the ground. And what I'm asking for, though, is that we get to that full assessment ahead of time and not wait till there's a backhoe standing there ready to dig.
Will be able to talk to Ken, if you can.
Very good.
Anybody else? Counselor, will you take us through the next stages?
Well, Steve, you want to kind of explain why you, you offered these, I didn't say what you were saying.
Happy to do that, yeah. I think, you know, as we've discussed previously, we've got our city council meeting rules embedded in city ordinances, and that puts certain restrictions and certain rigor around changes to those rules. And so we recently made a change. I think it's about, the 60 days is about to be up. But this, taking the city council meeting rules out of the city ordinances and just putting them into a resolution is the more common procedure. It allows us a lot more flexibility. It allows us to try something, if it's not working for us, to back it out without always going to in ordinance to change the ordinance. So I think it gives the city council a lot more flexibility, gives all of us a lot more flexibility to make adjustments as we see fit and not with the rigor of making a change to the law. So that's the intent behind these.
And Mayor, what, so what you've got here, but the ordinance and the resolution together, they'll be voted on, considered separately, but just to explain what you've got. The ordinance repeals basically what has been adopted by ordinance and replaces, so when we talk about, well, the title is to repeal the entirety of Division 4 of Article 2, Chapter 2 of Code Ordinance in the City of Bellevista. And then we specifically have the sections that are going to be repealed, which are 2-105 through 2-113. So I want to direct your attention over to the resolution because that's going to be where you're re-adopting the same rules that you've got now. There are no substantive changes that have been made to these rules. The only thing was just some matter of organization and changing the lettering and numbering to make it right and some formatting. That's basically it. I mean, I noticed other things that probably should need to be, would be written a little better, but I didn't touch them. I don't want to make any changes to them because the point here is to get them in a format and a way to where you can address them in the future more easily. So just to kind of orient you a little bit, you know, in the city code, which you have access to online, section 2-105 is going to be Rule 1, which will be the new Rule 1. 2-106 is going to be Rule 2. 2-107 is Rule 3, all the way through. And so that's what this does. And so the way this is structured, the ordinance does not have an emergency clause, so it is going to become effective 60 days after publication, as any ordinance would. And so your resolutions, when you vote on them and they're approved, they become effective immediately. They don't have to be published. But if you look at the terms of the resolution, the resolution only takes effect upon the effective date of an ordinance repealing the rules of order procedure. So there's no gap. And the ordinance itself clarifies that this is just, is not meant to make any substantive changes, that these are basically going to be considered to be a continuation of existing rules, not a readoption of new rules. And anything in mid-process or procedure during this conversion, they're not going to impact it. So if you have something that's been tabled, or something that's on a second reading, or something, you're not going to have to worry about procedural technical things. So that's what this does. So you'll have two different items to consider. The ordinance, of course, has to be read three times on three separate days unless you suspend the rules and agree to go to a third and final reading. Doesn't really matter either way. If you want to go, if you want to go ahead and adopt the resolution and wait on the ordinance, you can do that. As I said, the resolution doesn't come into effect until the ordinance comes into effect. So you're not going to be causing any issues with that.
Jason, does everybody have the resolution?
If it is in the papers, it's not in the papers.
So Jason, if we, so if we did this in August, which we could only deal with the third and final reading, it wouldn't really be effective until October, September, 60 days.
Right.
So the fastest of it is October.
If you, assuming you don't have a quorum in July, and it gets pushed to first reading in August, and you suspend the rules and go to third and final reading and finally approve it in August, and Wayne gets it published within a week or so after that, then 60 days from that date of publication, which is going to be at some point late October.
Okay. Questions at all? Okay, we move into the discussion. Larry has informed us this evening that he is unable to attend the council meeting. That means we are looking for a quorum. If you remember, forms four, regardless of whether it's about a pre-existing tree. So there still has to be a meeting. Make a roll call. Say that there is no quorum. We cannot have a special meeting before the August meeting because there is an ordinance that was put in place about four years ago that says unless it is going to substantially impact the financial situation of the city, et cetera, et cetera, you cannot have a meeting. And none of the items that we've discovered have any kind of impact on our plans. Counselor, anything to add?
Well, your special meeting restriction says that no special meeting shall be called for agenda items which may be considered the next regularly scheduled meeting at the council without placing risk to the public or additional financing expenses, financial expenses in the city. So this does not involve that.
Okay, any questions?
Couple of comments about that. One is, you know, I think, I appreciate things come up and people might not be able to attend any given meeting. Perhaps we can do better in the future for planning purposes to see this coming. There's only two meetings a month, 12 months in the year. It doesn't turn out, I presume at this point, it doesn't turn out that this has a huge impact on city business at this point, but it could have. And to the extent that we can do planning, see these things coming in advance, we might have more flexibility on how we work around such things. So I'd like to see us do that in the future. And also for the next meeting, so people have the schedule, they, for any number of people that might be inclined to show up, how do we get them noticed so that, I don't mind showing up and just going through the formality of not having a meeting, but I wouldn't want that for somebody who came to speak to the city council. How do we get notice?
Well, you don't know that you don't have a quorum until you call the meeting to order and call the call. So you establish it by resolution every year, you're going to have regular meetings once a month and the day in which you have. So your law, your rules, your law, say you've got to call the meeting to order, you've got to call the roll. That happens in public, you know, the two-hour notification, all that stuff has to go out for that process to take place. The roll is called, the presiding officer says, you know, if your quorum is not present, then by rule, the meeting will be immediately adjourned and all items held over to the next meeting. If you know in advance you're probably not going to have a quorum, there really is no official way to call off the meeting or anything because you have to have the meeting. So, but you could informally make an announcement or a press release or whatever method you see appropriate to say, we don't believe we'll have a quorum, we're going to call the meeting to order, just so, you know, we don't think, because you can't definitely say for sure there won't be because plans can change and four of you may end up being here. And then you can do business, even if the mayor's not here, any four of you, three of you with the mayor or four of you without the mayor could conduct business.
I think that makes sense, to put out the word somehow so that people know. I think the very highest probability is we're not going to have a quorum. We don't plan to. And to put the word out so that people know we're going, you know, we have a different plan in mind, and we don't intend to have public input, we don't intend to have the agenda items addressed in this meeting, I think that would be the right thing to do.
Keith can maybe put something together that states that, that we anticipate not having.
I would think the only problem that causes is, say, somebody's plans do change and people don't come because they thought we weren't going to have a quorum.
That's why Jason.
Then we have a meeting and proceed. It's like when you go back to the zoning decision that was made on the Wonderland Cave. There was an article in the paper that said very clearly that there was not going to be a vote on the Wonderland Cave at that particular city council meeting. So a bunch of the people that were against it did not come to that meeting. The vote was taken. So that, I think, could be a big mess.
The most you could say is we don't anticipate having a quorum, but we will be calling meeting to order and people can make their own judgments.
Right.
Show up and decide, oh, I'll watch them call the roll and leave, or whatever.
Yeah.
Just to give you an idea, roughly four months before July, I usually announce that the meeting begins.
Yeah, I do a lot about the meeting.
I do this plan.
Fair enough.
And typically we keep it short and sweet because of exactly what's happening now. Because it tends to be a popular time and issue, issue of stuff happens. So we tend to keep it just to a couple of things on which I can.
Well, for the record, I've been at council four and a half years and this is the first time it's ever happened.
Yeah, that's right.
So I was at it for.
So, okay. Any other discussion? You'll notice that Wayne is taking a meeting. That's because there's a new law coming into effect on July 24th?
July 24th. All meetings of any decision-making body have to be recorded and kept for one full year.
That includes the A and P?
Yes.
Planning Commission?
Planning Commission.
Of those that are?
Destruction Appeals. Anybody that can make a decision. If it's strictly an advisory thing, it doesn't need to.
Now, you've been recording our regular meetings and you take minutes off of that, but we're going to have to start recording. There won't be minutes of these meetings, but there will be records.
We will just have the recordings so that if somebody wants to, they can request it.
I just went through the legislation issue. It's advised as we're giving a recommendation. Let's see, what else? As you know, we've got a slight delay in the traffic lights in Kingsland. They don't have the updated report. They've had to reach out to, I can't recall, we're still working on multiple sites. It may impact, some of the steel was already down there because it was specifically measured for where they thought the mass was going to be. So we don't know if that's going to be a hiccup or a hiccup or not. So we're still waiting. It's a great thing that they have the center cable located out here.
I'm really surprised that somebody didn't do their due diligence and look to see what was under there because that fiber optic cable's been there at least 10 years. Somebody dropped the ball.
I'll tell you what Steve Lawrence told me. He said that on both sides of 71, there's so much varied stuff. It's scary, that's his term. They don't know where all of it is because it's still.
You're trying to tell me the phone company put in fiber optic cable and didn't record it?
It could be the phone company, it could be Walmart, they put in the bunker.
I find that really hard to believe in this day and age.
Well, I remember it's not the phone company putting it in the ground, it's contractors.
Right, but you can't tell me they didn't record it. I just can't believe that.
All I'm telling you is what Steve.
I know, I know what he's telling you, but I got a real problem with that.
Oh, well, I think we all do. We look at the tunnel and we have to cancel because of the cable wiring. And that should have been obvious.
To pick up the city, have a lot of fiber optic cable around the city. Unfortunately, they were not aware.
Same problem.
Until you hit it.
Is the library groundbreaking still Sunday?
Still on the 21st.
But Sunday at 2:00?
Yeah, it's pretty good. Sensei.
I'm not sure where they're going to break the ground because the ground's already broken. If they're going to find some plot of ground, they can turn and we'll have to go.
And there's a booster light.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Do you want to give us an update on Sunset?
Sure. I spoke to the project manager today. Some updates, he mentioned where they received their permit from the state for the sewer line along 71, hopeful to have that approval letter within the next two weeks. Said to date, they've finished nine sections of that wall that you can see when you drive by, and they're going to, they're going to hang steel. So you'll see the steel structure of the building. They'll start on the 22nd, and that's going to take about 10 days to two weeks. Once that steel structure gets in place, they can start backfilling behind that wall so that they can build a second retaining wall and then build their way up to the road. They said that they've changed the design on that upper retaining wall, which will be visible from the road, from a gabion basket rock system to a ready rock stacked stone that will look much more, much nicer to the eye. He's still telling me that they're probably a couple of months from being able to start work on the road.
So Doug, a couple of months from being able to start, and how long before, what's the best guess for completion?
I didn't get a, I didn't get a completion date. I know there's a water line up there that's going to have to be finished. He just said that they're just, every day making tons of progress and working as hard as they can, but he really couldn't tell me if the road construction was starting two months or three months. He just said, we're hopeful for a couple of months. And then once they start, depending on weather and if they run into anything else, any other unforeseen problems, but he couldn't tell me a finished date on the road.
Sewer line, is that down along 71?
Yes, sir.
That they're getting service as well, at which point?
Yes. It took them a year to get the state approval because of the same thing. They had to figure out how much is on east side because no one goes on the west side of the rock. And they finally figured out a way to get it up, where they can connect CBS with the toy joy store. There have been some changes of some of the people that we have been dealing with, which is probably a good thing. Dr. Hull made one person in her organization a facilities manager who is our go-to person. Before, we were going all over the place.
Yes, John Sandsbury is his name.
And so John has met with Derrick and so, and Doug seems very knowledgeable. So now we go to him to get the updates. And when we met with John, Dr. Hull's legal counsel was there, and I also emphasized that we're looking for a $100,000 bond or a letter of credit. So if that property collapses again, it's not a retirement interest, it's a cheap rate. So we'll keep giving you updates at each meeting as we create closer and closer to getting it done. Does everybody understand what the basket was going to look like as opposed to the rock? The basket, you might have seen, it looks like wire mesh and it's done rock on the inside.
Yeah.
Typically along creek or river embankments. It isn't very quick. So this is a much more elegant solution.
So this is like a stack of stones, what you're talking about?
Yeah, like an interlocking block.
The water line, is that the old Bellevista?
No.
That blocks Sunset?
No, it's, it's POA water. It came down from Cunningham and it was put into place by a POA contractor.
So it comes down Cunningham to about 71?
It comes down to the actual site, down Sunset.
Oh.
Because there's nothing off Sunset. There's the remnants of the old hotel, but it was serviced by the old.
Water?
Yeah, the ram water that was across the street or across the lake. And.
So what did they install that water, does that do?
Yeah, well, they put it in. That's, there's some supposition that calls it a whole new collapse in person. So that was about, gosh, that's over a year ago. It was spring of last year, and they were bringing the water line down from Cunningham. All right, anything else? This evening, we've got Kent Laughlin with us. Kent is sort of the guru upon gurus of Alta Planning. And Derrick is going to be showing you the map that he took out of my office today. So perhaps you could point out just what that's trying to depict.
Sure.
And then Kent has put this together for you as well. I think this is the last thing around the discussion as far as I know. And I'm going to bring your ordinance in part because I still have stuff I have to do. Since we realize we're very alone, there's a lot you have to do before we, before you proceed.
May I ask a quick question? Whatever happened with the state's plans to update 340 west of City Hall? They had the hearing and they showed the maps and then?
Of the bridges, you mean?
Nothing.
Has that been obligated yet, do you know, by the state through regional planning?
Doug, do you have any?
Maybe you could give Tim a call?
We can, we can check for a status update on that.
Okay, and send a note out?
Yes.
And in fact, send a note to Wayne if you wouldn't mind?
Of course.
And then Wayne can send it to council because it's a certain thing to do on emails.
Of course.
They had that meeting and looked at maps and all that mess and then?
I do know they're digging cores, weren't they, when that, you know, the big golf tournament?
Yep, private football tournament.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's game on. It wasn't something they were going to start immediately. It was like a, I believe it was completion in 2020.
I think it's, yeah.
Okay.
It's out there. Like regional planning is here. So we need to locate the area. And there's the old lines up in the city.
Right.
Anything else?
So we're not adjourning then?
No.
Right, we're going to continue. Yeah, very good.
No, I'm just going to see.
Yes, our sick trails.
Thank you. All right. It's the Derrick and Kent Show. Derrick, you want to explain the map and what you're depicting?
I sure can. I, if I may, I might just let Kent go ahead and get started with his, that he's prepared and then anything that he doesn't cover, then I can jump in on the map.
Okay. Everyone has one of these? Good, thanks, man.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kent Laughlin. I'm with Alta Planning Design. And so Trailblazers approaches 2nd June to have analyze three crossings and provide recommendations for how these things could look. The first crossing is at Cooper and Lancashire, right here. Next one is Highlands Road, just south of Rogers. And the third is Reardon Road crossing. And these were all originally the pedestrian tunnels. The tunnel like Cooper was mixed due to underground utilities, which is not going to get enough depth to go underground. And then Highland, Highlands Road was mixed because of the traffic, the average daily traffic not being high enough to warrant that tunnel. And then the Reardon Road was cited on that aggravated crossing. Again, getting under the road and utilities were kind of an issue with that crossing as well.
Kent, do you mind, if, a little more by way of introduction, Alta's role, what's your expertise, what's this company's expertise, and why are you guys participating in the process?
Absolutely. So I'm kind of the project manager running the roadway crossing portion of the 1100 trail system. And so Alta is a nationally recognized company that focuses mainly on active transportation. This is bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. And so we've been tasked with identifying the best way to get people safely across the roadway and safely and efficiently. And so starting, so when we determine the best treatment for these roadway crossings, we kind of look at a number of factors. And this is kind of under the assumptions, a portion of the report. We look at the type of roadway, whether it's a local roadway, collector, arterial. We look at the posted speed as well as the average daily traffic. And then we'll kind of dive into the line of sight and stopping sight distance. And so line of sight would be, you know, your first point when you can see a trail crossing. And then your stopping sight distance would be the distance in advance of the crossing that you would need to come to complete stop. Those are just, you know, some of the basic engineering terms that we look into. So from, from these assumptions, we were able to calculate the stopping sight distance, and that's kind of the chart that you will see on page two. And now we'll kind of jump into the, so at Lancashire, the one approach that was more of a concern would be southbound towards Lancashire. But because this is a stock condition at Cooper and Lancashire, this is not as much of a concern. And, you know, northbound from Cooper and Lancashire, the stopping sight distance is perfect, is adequate. And that's the same with the Reardon Road crossing as well as the Highlands Road crossing. And then on this, on the fourth page, we kind of showed a typical layout of your stopping sight distance, your line of sight, and how we came up with the appropriate distances to place advanced warning signage, pavement markings, and whether or not this were born and are part of the crossing.
Clarification, you refer on page two to this, to the green book, is that?
Yes, this is, so the Ashville Green Book is a national guidelines that engineers, transportation engineers use to determine stopping sight distance and line of sight.
So the green book is the actual?
Yes, that's, that's the golden standard. That's the golden standard. So diving into, so our recommendations, so we're on Highlands and Reardon, we only have two lanes of traffic. And, you know, using this chart, which we've used many times, on page number four, the chart in the second half of the page, this kind of determines the appropriate. in the second half of the page, this kind of determines the appropriate treatment for these trail crossings. And so we've looked at, you know, using our best judgment as well as using this chart as a guidance to help provide the correct recommendations. And so at the Cooper and Lancashire crossing, we actually provided three options for you guys. Looking at, this first option on page one A, we looked at providing a, you know, our first ideas were to get pedestrians and trail users across the roadway as quickly as possible and as safely as possible. And kind of put the vehicular traffic on the back burner for this particular crossing. So providing a queue space for one car to stop turning off of Lancashire, providing space to get off the road and stop and see the crossing, and then moving forward and moving up north. So on this particular design, we looked at, you know, really necking down this intersection, providing, you know, only two lanes of traffic. And this will reduce the amount of conflict points for pedestrians and cyclists. So this neck downs could be flexible delineators, which, you know, is something that could be run over, but it's still rampant in many places. This could be, it could be painted to kind of reflect these new corner radii. It could also be patched with white striping. So there's quite a bit of options. One of the factors that we considered on this one, and that kind of helped us downturn this option, was we know that there was truck traffic going up to the clubhouse. So, you know, providing enough turn radius for them to make it through this intersection was important. So we decided, you know, this is still an option, but we'd like to keep exploring the other alternatives. So switching on.
Kent, yeah, before we move off that, do you mind? I'd like to just kind of note on this drawing, if you're westbound on Lancashire today, you make that right onto Cooper at a pretty good pace. It's not a hard turn.
Right.
It looks like you're taking out that.
Yes, that's kind of what we were trying to do, is really slow people down making those turns a miss so that they would have to, you know, slow down and make sure that they saw the pedestrian as they were trying to cross.
Right, good look. This is really, you know, a good example, I think, of kind of the imposition of moving from a tunnel to an at-grade crossing.
Right.
And so these are the kinds of things that I think, in order for me to be comfortable with it, I want to know there's a process in place that the cities have the opportunity to review and to buy into this. And as long as that's there, I don't need to be in the process, in that approval process. But I want to know that it's there. And I want to know that the city has the opportunity to say, yeah, we're okay with this. Because these are the kinds of impositions, I think, that if I'm being asked to make financial, approve financial changes, I think there's a de facto approval that I'm okay with this. And I don't know enough to be okay with this. I think we're changing the flow of traffic there and creating a situation that could be unsafe. And I think we're trying to minimize that as much as possible.
Correct.
It's unfortunate, I think, that we can't put a tunnel in here.
Yeah, absolutely.
And just to kind of, to build on that a little bit, I hadn't heard previously that the reason we're not putting a tunnel on Highlands Road is simply because we think the traffic doesn't require it. And again, I think, Kent, my position on this, just so you know, and thank you for being here, and I appreciate you being here. We needed to have this session, we needed to have this conversation. I don't think, and I know it's not Alta, but I don't think outside of the city, people should have the opportunity to say, hey, we changed our minds about the tunnels. And I don't know how far we're going to go, as to my previous comments, before we're down by other tunnels. And I think every time we take a tunnel out and replace it with an at-grade crossing, we have diluted the original proposition. And that's the proposition we received the grant for. That's the proposition that we should be trying to protect as we move forward. So I don't think these are willy-nilly changes when we take out a tunnel and put in an at-grade crossing. So if what we're saying is Highlands could have been a tunnel and we're choosing not to, why couldn't we take those funds somewhere else and say, okay, we have to stay within budget. This money would be better used by putting the tunnel in here at Cooper and Lancashire. It may be more expensive, I appreciate that. Maybe we have to go deeper, we have to do something different, and maybe it's going to be more expensive. But why wouldn't we ship those monies from Highland Road to one of these other tunnels? And I'm not sure if that's your question to answer, Derek. That's kind of what I want to understand is happening so that it's not, by the time we're done here, we're not down to six tunnels or four tunnels or two tunnels. I don't know where we're going with this, but this is diluting the original proposition and that's not where we want it.
I recall your question about the feasibility of the remaining tunnels, and I did get with Trailblazers on that since our last discussion on that. And after Kent's presentation, I'll be happy to address that question. And I know that he's, as he continues, we'll see that this 1A and 1B are options that, they're options, but his actual recommendation at this cross, at this intersection is actually on, is on 1C.
I appreciate, I think the, kind of the point of view of changing the flow of traffic going westbound on Lancashire that's headed to the country club is for the safety of the cyclists. And I'm not sure how thoroughly it addresses the flow of our traffic and whether that's something that the city wants to give up or not.
I think on 1C, the intersection, can't correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like the intersection of Lancashire and Cooper is not being altered. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
It's not, oh, I thought this brown area, to me, when I look at this brown area that's in there, to me, that better represents the way that road flows. It's definitely not a hard right turn there. You can hit that turn with speed.
And we definitely want to give you guys some options to look at and kind of discuss.
A is not the plan.
A is not the plan.
A is not the plan.
B is not the plan.
B is not the plan.
C is the plan.
C is the plan, but C doesn't really show that intersection. Although from a transportation side.
Because it doesn't affect.
Because they're moving it. They're moving a trail out of the way.
So it's a trail that's the intersection.
It's up to the intersection as well. With traffic movement and transportation, I like 1B, but not for the crossing. I like 1B for the intersection consideration.
Correct.
And in addition to that, we need a passing lane eastbound for left turners on Cooper on Lancashire.
Now, there's so few people turning, that's just extra money. It's not going to sell anything. You're going to end up on the golf course. That ain't going to fly.
I sure end up a lot of times putting on my brakes for people.
Well, yeah, people get to turn that way, but you're looking at the amount of people turning that way. And ending up on the golf course, you know, the amount of traffic going left doesn't justify a turn lane. Sorry.
Well, I.
You gotta remember what I did for 39 years, it doesn't justify a turn lane.
And I don't know what the turning movements are. You're probably right at the bottom.
Really?
So how far out Cooper is 1C?
1C is 250 feet from that intersection.
Okay.
And this is more of a mid-block between Golf Club and Lancashire. The middle location between those two.
Okay, so you haven't come and turned out to the country club yet?
No, not yet. Yeah, that's kind of, it's just before that intersection.
So in 1C, the issue that I see is that those right turners off of Lancashire going west are going to be skating up that hill and trying to maintain momentum as opposed to probably even making the speed limit in that area, quite frankly. And so moving that location, while it moves it away from the intersection where you have a lot of turning movements, I'm not sure it makes it a better place. And the reason here that we're looking at this is because we can't put a tube crossing underneath the roadway, is that the deal?
Correct.
And where is the conflict? If you look at 1A, because it's a nice picture of the intersection, where is that conflict that causes us to not be able to put the tunnel in?
Fortunately, I don't know the answer to that exactly. That's just outside our scope. So I always am really part of engineering the tunnels more just.
Okay. So the way it works is somebody comes to you and says, hey, we've decided we're not going to put a tunnel in here, we need some options. What would it look like in at-grade crossing? What are the best options available to us?
Right, right. And yeah, so these three options, you know, the first one was really, okay, what's the best option for pedestrians and cyclists? What's the best way to get them through? The next option was, you know, not affecting the current vehicular movements and how we create a crossing, a safe crossing for pedestrians and cyclists. Then that third option was kind of the happy middle ground between vehicular circulation and bike path circulation.
And Kent, who makes this determination? Who reports back to you and says, we would like option?
Well, actually, this is our recommendation that we felt it was best to move this crossing away from that intersection. Yeah, 1C. I was out there taking pictures and it was quite a hazard. It was quite experience. And so I definitely want to get that, those trail users away from that intersection. And unfortunately, it might be a little more trail than those folks might want, but it creates that better opportunity for them to safely get across without having to cross four or five lanes of traffic.
Sure.
Well, I think 1C is clearly the safest of those three. I mean, no traffic expert.
Yeah, except you're assuming that the cyclists are going to do that instead of trying to come across the intersection anyway, which they're doing in a lot of other places. They're short cutting the crossings and going across where they find that it's appropriate.
Well, you know, we just passed a law, they don't write the stop for stop signs and do anything else, so what the heck? You realize we didn't.
Yes, I know.
People don't take rights. She's going to any place at once, almost at any time, so they got cars launched.
It's a good sign there for those who take that opportunity.
We have, we have trail rules of the road that we've adopted by ordinance. And so there are traffic regulations related to the usage of the trail. It's almost like anything else. If you're caught doing it, they could be stopped and cited for something if they're creating dangers or violating the trail rules or going somewhere.
If you're the car that's driving that hits somebody.
But again, and of course, it doesn't mean things aren't going to happen, of course.
Can I ask Doug a question, if you know the answer? Back to my question about what the state was going to revamp on 340. My recollection says their improvements stop east of this intersection. Is that correct?
I'm not.
Because they're changing the intersection of Chelsea and Lancashire. They're adjusting the intersection of Dogwood and Lancashire. But I think what they're changing does stops just short of this.
I think you're correct.
That's my recollection as well.
Okay.
I'm wondering whether we're short-sighted in stopping that project short of the Cooper Road intersection.
Because this is the worst. This intersection's horrible.
1B would be ideal there along with a passing lane eastbound.
That's a state highway project.
Well, we don't have any say either.
Well, I don't know that we don't have any say.
Trust me, we don't have, I worked with them.
I think where they're going, where they're talking about it.
Plus, you're going to have to mess with the fiber optic cable because you're going to have to make that bridge wire that's just over there by Sugar Creek.
That's the, that's the gist of the project, really, is the.
That's why they're stopping where they're stopping.
Yeah. Steve, to answer your question, just who is looking out for the city? Well, they've been hired to do that. They're doing that with the city's behalf. So that, that's, you know, they're providing technical expertise on this and the mayor and the staff have been relying on it, that's basically. But also to your question, there's not been an independent set of eyes in the city to sort of look over their shoulder in terms of what the recommendations are.
Yeah, on these recommendations, we're trying not to touch 340, just because.
Sure. So you really found that stopping all that traffic halfway down a long hill was better than stopping where they'd be stopping anyway?
Yes, we still found, just because of the amount of traffic making those turns, it was still just safer to go.
Because of people coming every which way.
Right, yeah, yeah. You had four or five different conflict points to look at.
Yeah.
So just.
Oh, yeah.
All right. So that is Cooper and Lancashire with our revision, again, being 1C.
Is the location that you're proposing here in 1C, Kent, is that staked in the field? Like we wondered, want to see where that is? Is it marked out there or something?
Actually, I don't think I marked it, but I think I have painted my card that I'll mark it after this.
Okay. It would be good just to, for us to get a feel of what's happening.
Moving on to the Highlands Road crossing. Since this one was fairly straightforward, we stepped back the advanced warning signage. And so most of the traffic is kind of staying on 340 or on Rogers, going towards Forest Hills. And so this is, this crossing, particular crossing is that kind of at the bottom of a valley. So we wanted to provide enough advanced warning so that those folks saw the crossing way in advance. So our Astro guidance told us that at 25 to 30 miles an hour, depending on how people are going, we put those at 100 feet in advance as well as the pavement markings, which is the X-ing and then the bicycle.
So is that, that's probably a lot quieter than.
It is considerably.
This is Highland Boulevard, there's Highland Road is a different, actually, there is a different road.
It's from Chelsea up to Rogers.
Yeah, Chelsea to Rogers is Highland Road and Highland Boulevard is that part that is southern part of the Nasco Loop.
But this is Highland Road.
Well, no, they're talking about Highland Boulevard though, aren't they?
No, Highland Road.
Oh, they pointed the other crosses out.
Yeah, from Chelsea.
That is Highland Road. Yes, that is Highland Road.
Down by Rogers.
Just south of Rogers Road. Connects, connects.
The country house over there. So it is really Highland Road. Okay, so the label is right on the draw.
So yeah, because it's at a, at a valley low point, we definitely wanted to provide advanced warning signage well enough in advance to help mitigate any traffic.
This is, I'm not on the council, but I drive this road quite often and I just want to be heads up. There is not a lot of traffic, but the traffic that goes down that road goes there, but fast. And we've had, in fact, the police have put out the little radar detect, radar number thing out there, the little sign. Kenny did that, I don't know, two, three years ago. We got cars doing 60 miles an hour down that road.
Okay.
It goes down, it straightens out, and it's just a racetrack right there. So just consider that.
There's nobody in the loops along there.
There's some.
There's somehow.
Speeder's not on the street.
Right. And there's a lot of traffic coming off of right and down to there.
There's a lot of people are taking that shortcut.
That's right. It's a shortcut.
So Kent, the recommendation to go at-grade as opposed to tunnel was based purely on traffic count?
Traffic count, sight distance, just it's kind of labeled that they called it a local galloping roadway.
And you're understanding the process then is this is, you know, suggested to the city and the city would say yes or no?
Yes.
So Derek and Doug, I don't know why we'd ever cancel out of a tunnel for an at-grade crossing unless we figured out that money can be better used to create a tunnel somewhere else. So to me, the answer is no. The answer is don't swap it. Don't. Whatever was proposed in the beginning, what was granted, what was estimated, what's been contracted for.
Did they ever give you guys an estimate what it would cost to put it right where it is and moving the cable?
There's no cable here.
Lancashire.
Does Lancashire.
Seven million dollars. This is not a cable conflict.
No, not that one, but he's talking back to Cooper. But they mentioned why they didn't do that. It was something in the paper that was a monstrous number to rearrange that fiber optic to put a tunnel in.
But is it a vault or is it a cable?
Vault.
It's a vault. Can you move the location of the tunnel to avoid the vault?
I think CEI engineering and crossland heavy contractors rigorously reviewed different scenarios on how to make the tunnel still feasible at those vault locations. And it was just, it was, it was not feasible.
Well, the point is you're moving away from the vault, so you're not dealing with that monster of the gravel.
We've just got significant grades in a lot of these locations, especially Cooper.
So even if you go west on, if you go back to that 1A drawing, even if you go west there, the land drops away from. Even if you go west there, the land drops away from, and maybe that's not the issue. The issue is to cross Cooper. Is that the objective here? In 1A, 1B, 1C, the issue, the goal is to cross Cooper safely. And so where was the tunnel before that was proposed? Anyone know?
It's, unfortunately, we don't, we did not bring an exhibit of that original, but it was, it's roughly between the intersection and where the option C is, somewhere in there the tunnel was proposed.
So somewhere's up the hill?
Not really. It's closer to the intersection than it is up the hill. That's why they could put it there. They were going to go underground. That's why the intersection's not going to be a factor once the tunnel was constructed.
Larry, if you'd like to see an exhibit of where the fiber optic was discovered and where the tunnel was originally proposed, staff can get that for you.
But Derek, I think Kent said something else about why a tunnel wasn't feasible here. I don't know if that's, if that's in your responsibility. I heard something about the depth of the tunnel. Is it limited by fiber or is this a different engineering matter altogether?
That's kind of a different engineering manner, but I know, what I've heard is that it was just, there's too many underground utilities to get that depth that you, that you would need to get on the road.
So it could be fiber, but it's utilities of some sort?
Yes.
You're starting to have a water line that goes up there, and it's probably a couple, two, three feet deep, and then you're going to have to be below that. I know there's a water line that goes up Cooper Road, so that, and that's going to be treated more feet to the top of the main, or four to five feet down to the bottom of the main, depending on the size of the main, depends how much you have to bridge it. But if you're below that space, and I don't know about the construction, I assume they were talking about open cut construction like they did on Chelsea over by Prescott. Is that right? Nature of construction of all of these is an open cut. They're saying a hole across the road.
For a tunnel.
Get it in there. So in that interim time space, you have to support any of those utilities that you intersect. Now, for the cabling, it's not uncommon for them just to let the cabling hang there in open air. You know where it is and you protect it, you don't hit it with equipment, but you just let it suspend. When you do a water line trench through there, you just let it hang through the trench. Sometimes you may end up having to support it depending on how big the cable is, the mass of the cable. But typically, they just let it hang and then you protect it when you backfill it. If you're looking at something like this, where you have a water line, the water line through there is probably asbestos cemented. It's the old system in Bella Vista. Those are probably for maybe eight foot sections at the most, and so you're going to have several joints that you're going to have to support, and that's not an easy thing to do. So open cutting is not a viable way to get across there in some cases.
We, the city council, in our last regular session, adopted a resolution to take money out of the contract. A financial transaction, as it was described to us, to take money out of the contract for two tunnels. It wasn't my understanding that one of those tunnels was going away because traffic flows were low there. It was my understanding there were utility conflicts on both of them. And, and again, I don't think I'd be comfortable supporting, taking a tunnel away because we think the traffic flow, or the traffic count is too low.
I don't think that had anything to do with the one on Cooper, or is it the cost of doing it?
No, but the one on.
On Highland.
Well, that's a whole, so we're done with Cooper? You're happy what they're doing there? So now we're going to Highlands?
No.
We're kind of talking about the crossings.
I'm interested in process. I'm, I'm kind of uncomfortable with the city council being at this level of detail, and I want to know there's process before it comes to the city council. And I want to know that we have some commitment to the original plan. And I thought it was presented to us at the city council meeting as though there were utility conflicts.
Just the one, just on Cooper.
Why, why, Jim, did you, why did we vote for removing a tunnel because traffic counts were low?
I don't think that was the reason. I think it was because of the cost.
Okay, well, that's, that's what I'm trying to get at.
I think it was because of the cost. Wasn't the, because the count didn't come up till today.
Right.
It was because of the cost of moving it because of that box and the cable. That was what happened to the Cooper one, because of the cost.
We did, we did one resolution that I think addressed two tunnels.
Well, I don't remember that. I know about the one on Cooper was strictly because of the cost, and it was seven failures is what they threw out that day.
To move it.
Yeah. So, you know, so we'd be either moving it drastically or going over the top.
The impression I had was the other one had a conflict as well with underground stuff. That was my understanding.
I can't believe there's that much going on in Highland, who knows?
I think we're, we're talking apples and oranges because we voted, he's identifying three places where they were going to have tunnels, and now they're not. We voted on two places and it was because of the fiber optic problem. Well, the two places are Cooper and Reardon. So I think really a third tunnel probably was taken out before we, before we even had our plan. So we only know about two. Like you said, we voted to take out two, and it was all fiber optic conflicts. And the two were Cooper and Reardon.
You may be right, John.
He knows about the third one that we just never knew about.
So are we going to see another transaction for that?
So are we actually eliminating a tunnel on Highland Road?
Yes, for traffic count. That's what he said.
So far, I don't know if we, to John's point, I don't know if we voted on that as a city council, whatever financial aspect of that there is.
Well, no, I'm wondering if it was taken out before the plan even came to us, do you know what I mean? And he sees it that way and we don't. Because they were 11 under, now they're nine under. So that's minus two, not minus three.
So it may have been 12 originally.
This one's still showing a tunnel.
Doug or Derek, do you guys have any sense of that?
I, I don't know if that came before, like you mentioned, John.
It's pretty nice them being with us.
I don't have a sense on the timing of the Highland decision, but appreciate you bringing that up and happy to, happy to report.
Are there nine tunnels left now?
Well, I'm, I'm counting ten. One, two, four, five.
He's not really a tunnel guy, he's a crossing guy. So are there nine tunnels left?
Yeah, there, I don't want to cut Kent short, but I did put sticky notes on there and that do kind of speak to that, so I'll be happy to, to look at that.
I see nine insignia for tunnels, counting Highland. So if we take Highland out, we're down to under eight, or eight under.
See, I, I don't care about the name. That's got, I have no interest in, we could call it Central Trails.
We can call it Banana if we want. I am with you.
What I'm, what I'm concerned about is that their proposition had tunnels because that is the easiest way for bikes and cars to coexist. And every time we take one away, I don't care about the name. I care about what was the original bill of sale? What did the city council sign up for? What were we granted money for? What are we supposed to be protecting along the course of the process?
I think the intent that I understand from Trailblazers is to, is to truly, no one really doesn't, no one loves hearing that a tunnel is not feasible, right? And I think that the, the goal and the intent is to build as many as were originally proposed, but, but unfortunately, there's just some real world challenges and discoveries that have been made, you know, from the locates that just make some decent changes. Kent, do you want to, we can kind of go through these different locations together. Good. So, to, so just as sort of a preface to Councilman Burke's request for a statement regarding the viability of the remaining tunnels in light of two that were not possible due to utilities, here is a summary via CES discussion with the Trailblazers, NWA Trailblazers within the last week. Per the Trailblazers, the goal is to put all the tunnels in. The following is a breakdown of the 11 crossings with more information. So this is, the first bullet point here being that three, three tunnels cross city streets and are moving forward with no, no conflicts at this time. Okay, and so those three are here at Cullen Hills, here at Highland Boulevard, and then also here at Chelsea.
That's the one that's already there. The Chelsea one's the one that's already there.
Correct. Okay, and I'm, I'm going to, this, this is going to address all 11 since 11 is a name. One crossing goes under a state highway and is being built by ARDOT through a bridge project with no known conflicts at this time. Okay, so Kent, it's my understanding this is right here. This would, this would be associated with the 340 project under Tanyard.
That's, that's the state project, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's what comes along with, they want to replace.
The state is building that one.
Yeah, they want to replace the bridge over Sugar Creek, and they're going to put in a tunnel that's going to connect up to this Cooper, this Cooper and Lancashire that we just discussed.
Correct, in sync with that bridge infrastructure.
Because you're on, you're on the north side of Lancashire once you get across Cooper, and somehow we got to get into the south side of Lancashire, and that's going to be by a tunnel that's put in by the state.
That's Tanyard Creek.
Correct.
Well, Tanyard runs in there too, but it's right there by the golf course, right by the golf course at the corner of Reardon and Lancashire.
No, Reardon and.
Chelsea.
Chelsea, Chelsea and Lancashire, thank you.
Right at the 40 sign on the other side. You can see it where the trail comes up.
Okay.
Okay. So that's, so that's one, two, three, four have been mentioned. One goes under an existing bridge along Pinion Creek, just north of Pinion Drive, and there are no known conflicts at this time with that one. Okay, the way that works is there's an existing bridge that carries traffic north and south on 71. That can be used as an, as an under crossing for this, this section of the trail, such that that paved, that section is just paved, and we use that existing infrastructure. That being one of the 11 unders, basically.
Correct. Not a funnel per se. Payed there where it goes under the bridge.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Four tunnels go under state highways with each location having fiber optic present near the road. ATT is currently looking into the cost of feasibility to adjust the location of fiber in these locations. Okay, there's one difference here, though, and the important clarification is that whereas the Cooper Tunnel Fiber Optic was laid out in a concrete vault, the fiber at these locations are not as restrained, and more opportunity may exist. However, we'll know more after ATT's feasibility study is complete, and the Trailblazers are waiting on that at this time. So that, those locations, Kent, these four belong state highways, we'll see those intersections here. So 1, 340, as you go between the two dams here, one is there, one is just east of the Camden and 340 intersection to allow north-south crossing there. And one is, one is here, crosses 279 just east of Camden. And then finally, up here, an east-west crossing over 279 midway between Cooper and the state. And then, so that rounds out, that's, that's 1, 2, 3, 4. That gets us up to 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9. So the, the two remaining is the Cooper Road and the Highland Road, which have been removed and replaced with at-grade crossings due to the unfeasible expense of moving fiber optic.
So it's fiber optic on Highlands?
That's correct.
I think it was a combination of low traffic counts.
Fiber optic.
Exactly. I didn't, I didn't.
I would have clarified that a second ago, but I, I had, I didn't have that right.
The Reardon Road line was always going to be above ground.
We had a note on here, tunnel by city.
Oh, yeah, that was, that was a city project originally. It was going to be, the city has been ended up having to condemn some property there, if I recall correctly, to put a, there was a plan to put sort of a trail in there, I think at one point. It's going to be a little more involved, I'm not sure if it may have been dreamed of actually been asphalted, sort of connected to the greenway at one point. I don't know what, we're all discussions with him, but I think the usefulness and the money situation just made that not feasible. I don't want to speak for you, I don't really know. But it did go away, I do know that. There was not going to be property there. Now, just, I want to remind everyone, because I know some of you are newer to us, the city four years ago, I look, it was in May of 2015, adopted a city master trail plan. So if you want to know why did these, you know, why is that red line where it is? Why are the trails where they are? It's in conformance with the master trail plan. And before that was adopted, there were, there's an opportunity for public discussion, public meeting, planning commission, all that stuff happened. So, you know, that, that did occur, it's been four years, so it's been a long time.
And there's a number of public meetings there, I recall.
Okay, good enough. I'm, I'm okay with all those things. And again, I just want us to deliver to the master plan. And I'm sure the master plan allows for some adjustments if necessary, but I don't think we should take them lightly. I think taking out a tunnel is dilutive to the original proposition, should be avoided if at all possible. The master plan was not a, it's got to be right here sort of plan. It was just a, a generally, it comes across this road and goes this way, sort of, to allow for these sorts of modifications.
And the location of the crossing would be shifted at the time of design to pick it up in place, idealistic for the intersection of bicyclers, walkers, and traffic.
So it sounds like the ones ATT are studying are a little tough in the air, so to speak.
So the question, so the question really would be, is that ATT is studying this? Have we gotten any feedback of what their answer was? It sounds from the memo that they're evaluating because they have it in a vault, and it may be evolved.
They're not in vaults in these locations.
None of these are in vaults.
That's my understanding. Per the, per the Trailblazers, the Trailblazers have asked ATT to do this feasibility study, and they can ask them for status updates, they can ask them to hurry up, but they, they can't, you know, it's up to ATT to, to complete that, to complete that study. But I, I think with them not being in vaults, it's been communicated that, that there is opportunity for hopefully more flexibility than, than those that are in vaults and much more static.
So the removal of the two crossings, the tunnel crossings that we've approved, acted on from the contract, takes those out. If ATT comes back and says, yeah, we can work with you for those tunnels, now where do we go?
Where do we go? If we can. We build them. Because they're already in. That's the best possible scenario.
And we build them.
The way, what would they contract?
They're not looking at the two that have already been taken out. That's, that's over.
These are the other ones.
Yeah, or other ones.
That have cable but no box.
Okay. So what you've still got on your agenda, it's all business for next time you deal with it, is to add the crossings in lieu of the tunnels. You approved the removal of the tunnels. Flip side is to add crossings, and that's what you got left.
The 42,000 only adds to the total amount for street crossings. The other big portion comes off of the tunnel.
They have a different contract with crossing.
Which basically reflects these three crossings here that are being completed, right? That's the 42,000.
That's center point. Two of them. It's the added center point contract. It's not, it's not, it's not the same amount of money.
No, I realize it's not the same amount, you're doing a different order, but these are the three crossings we're proposing to add for the 42,000.
It's actually just two. Cooper and Highland's road.
Yeah.
Those are the two that are being added and.
Took the 280,000 off because of the tunnels, we're not gonna have a tunnel, that's why it's only 42,000.
So the one on Reardon Road is a matter of just adjusting its location.
Right, and, uh, yeah, we, we went out and on Reardon and we chose the High Point, kinda along the flat stretch of Reardon Road. So we, that's where we located the crossing on the, so westbound traffic, we placed paving markings a bit further in advance and typical, just so that people see that there's a crossing about to come, they're, they're home, but down the, down the hill.
And also those 30 miles an hour down the hill, it's gonna take a lot more to stop than your two-degree thing, even though where the trail is, it's only two degrees. What's the degree of that hill not too far from that corner, they're not gonna be able to stop in time according to your own chart, but that's another deal because you've already cleaned out some ground. Just, just be aware that I, I said something early on, and that one could be a real problem.
I was wondering if there's been any problems with the crossings on the east side on the back 40, because there's a number of road crossings there.
Problems.
I haven't heard of, I mean, we've had a couple of beacons get hit in the last six months, but I haven't heard of injuries.
The lights just don't seem to jive with the crossings, I don't know.
From my observation, I think it's been working good, the ones on the back.
And so the, kinda the difference between this new round of RRFPs.
Or when the lights start and somebody passes, or the lights are on and nobody passes.
Right.
It's like, whatever your sensor is, it's set way too sensitive if they're on sensors.
Correct, so the back 40 RRFPs are on just sensors, these new RRFPs will have a push button in addition to the motion sensor. That's a new addition that we've, we've added.
Like the crosswalk does.
Right, so, yeah, so the pedestrians would be slow enough to push the button, then cross, and then cyclists, the hope is to pick up their movements prior to them crossing. There's, everybody's supposed to stop, we've got stop signs posted out on, for trail users, so they are to stop.
Motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Kent, are we done? Have we covered everything you want to cover?
Yes.
Derek, anything else?
Thanks a lot, Jerry. Yes, sir, unless you, unless you all have any other questions?
Anybody else?
Could you send out an update of that summary you just presented to us?
Yes, sir.
Just to get a better feel of what we're thinking, correct?
Okay, there's a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
You don't need a motion.
No, without a, without a, for adjourn.
Thank you, John.